Good evening and welcome to the August 16th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Vu, would you lead us tonight?
I will. Please begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda is available on the counter by the entrance along with requests to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that requests to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. With that, we will jump into our agenda. First section, the General Administration Function, Part One, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission. I do not have any requests to speak from folks here tonight on items not on the agenda. So we will then move to Item B, Correspondence and Staff Communication, from the Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, I have two quick items to note for you. First of all, for those of you who didn't have a chance to meet her, we have Maggie Stern here with us tonight from City Attorney's Office. She is filling in for Jeff tonight, but ultimately, we do expect that she will become our regular Planning Commission Counsel going forward here, probably very soon. And then, second of all, I just, we'll get to this in more detail when we get to this Item Number Four, but I did want to note for you that there was an administrative error on the agenda regarding the recommendation on Item Number Four. Fortunately, the staff report is indeed correct on that one, so when we get to that item, we'll look at that in more detail. But that concludes staff communications at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly, and welcome, Ms. Stern. We'll move to Item C, Disclosure of Ex-Parte Communications. Planning Commissioners should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda items at this time. We'll start with, to my right, with Commissioner Austin.
None to report.
Vice Chair Castillo.
None to report.
Commissioner Vu.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Harrison.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Lebig.
None, thank you.
And I would just like to report that although I did not have direct conversation, I did see that Item Three was posted on social media. Several comments were made. I did review those comments, so just in abundance of clarity and transparency, I will report that I did read comments on Item Three. With that, we'll move to the Consent Agenda. We have two items on the Consent Agenda this evening. The first is consideration approval of the minutes from the August 2nd, 2018 Commission Meeting, and the second is a public hearing regarding proposed 1450 Parkway Boulevard Vesting Tenet Parcel Map, Number 5150. I believe we need to have a public hearing, conduct a public hearing, to handle Item Two on the Consent Agenda, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have any requests to speak on Items One or Two, so I will turn it to the Commission. Do we have any questions or comments? Are we comfortable moving forward with the Consent Agenda as is? Very good. I'm going to close the public hearing and take a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Moved by Vice Chair Castillo. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lebig. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. The Consent Agenda has been discarded. We will move now to our regular agenda.
Chair Sternfels, if I may, regarding Item Number Two, any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action. The appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you, Secretary Tilly. One day, I will remember. We will move to the regular agenda now. Item Three, we have a public hearing regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a proposed 115-room hotel at 1020 West Capitol Avenue. Mr. Laffey and Ms. Lynn.
Chair Sternfels, members of the Commission, I want to reintroduce Sarah Sin to you. She's our intern in our Community Development Department. We did bring her to our last meeting. I believe some of you had the opportunity to meet her, but she will be doing the initial presentation on this item, and then Mr. Laffey and I will also be available for any questions on this item.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sternfels and members of Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Sin, and I am a Community Development Intern. The item that I am presenting before you today is in regards to a conditional use permit for a hotel at 1020 West Capitol Avenue. So you could see that it's located only a couple of doors down from City Hall. So this hotel is designed to be a 115-room, four-story, extended-stay hotel. The individual rooms will be designed to have a kitchen and a living room area, as well as communal facilities such as a pool, a fitness area, and a lobby. Currently located at the lot is a church building. It'll be, it's located within the Central Business District Zone, which is designated for retail, service, office, and other compatible uses to develop the city's civic and cultural core. And within the CBD zone, a hotel use is a conditional use. So this hotel may be a desirable use because it'll be the first of its kind as an extended-stay hotel, and it will carry the Hilton brand, which is a nationally flagged hotel. It will be able to broaden visitors' options, thus helping West Sacramento to become more of a visitor's destination city, as well as with the creation of the future streetcar. It's expected that guests will find easy access to riverfront destinations or other desirable destinations like Bailey Field, the Golden One Arena. As well as economically, it may be beneficial because it will generate some revenue through the transient occupancy tax and through other property tax obligations. The hotel also complies with the West Capitol Avenue Design Guidelines to basically help the city achieve its goal of turning West Capitol Avenue into more of a pedestrian-friendly-climbed street. And this project does so by featuring no front setbacks, parking located in the rear, and pedestrian-friendly elements like pedestrian-oriented lighting, higher awnings, high ceilings, as well as a lobby. And if this project were to move forward, staff has specified some conditions that the applicant should agree to maintain the project. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions, if you have any.
Excellent job. Thank you. We'll open a public hearing in just a moment here, but does anyone have any initial questions for Ms. Sin?
I have one question. Just, can you address the parking allotment and how that's decided in terms of number of parking spots? Maybe staff can just help. I'm not too familiar with the hotels and how parking lots or parking spaces are allotted. I just want to get a better understanding in terms of what that requirement is, if possible.
Yeah, so hotels are required to have .5 to .9 parking stalls per room. It's a minimum and a maximum, and this hotel is proposing 83 parking stalls, which meets, it's in the middle of that requirement.
And just to follow up on that, aside from parking, I know one of the visions of the city is to encourage individuals to use alternative modes of transportation. And I know we've talked a lot about that in various projects that have come before us, for example, jump bikes and Uber, Lyft, and others. Is there a thought to incorporate bike racks in locations like hotel parking lots to encourage individuals, given that this is a long-term kind of stay hotel, to encourage individuals to maybe use alternative modes of transportation like jump bikes or any other?
Or employees.
Or employees.
Sure. The Missful Code allows for a reduction in the required parking if bicycle parking is provided. I'm sure we could figure out a way to incorporate some bike parking into this project. They do also have EV parking, charging stations along the eastern side of the property, more towards the front.
Thanks. And I think that's maybe something that the Commission can have a discussion afterward and see what the thought is about, maybe as we move forward and consider these types of developments, and our vision to encourage individuals that live here and work here and visit here to use other modes of transportation, that maybe we can incorporate those types of structures and developments that come before us to help encourage that type of behavior. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions for city staff at this point? If not, we will open the public hearing. And I do not have any requests to speak on this item at this time, I don't believe. That is correct.
The applicant is here and would be available for any questions, if you have them for him?
I believe someone may, so if the applicant wants to just come up and introduce himself, and then we will tackle questions for the applicant.
Good evening, Chair Rosenstern, and Planning Commissioners. My name is Gunit Bhajwa, Managing Principal for Presidio Companies. We are a Yolo County-based hotel development company, 18th year in doing business. Just a little bit about Presidio. We've done about 20 hotel projects. We're doing the Hyatt-centric downtown Sacramento next to the arena. We're doing the Hilton Garden Inn in downtown Davis and the Hyatt House. Very excited to be doing this project in West Sacramento. We feel this, you know, it's a catalyst project for West Sacramento and adds to the transformation of the Central Business District. So I want to introduce our project architect, Young Kim. And I also want to add, Sarah, you did a great job. Thank you. And I'm here to answer any questions you have about the hotel, parking. I think the bike idea is excellent. We absolutely, you know, going to add some, you know, maybe 10 to 15 bikes for extended-stay customers. We'll also add a van, which drives, you know, people around because it is a extended-stay hotel. So some people, we encourage people to, you know, take Lyft and Uber, and, but if, until the streetcar gets done, which obviously will provide great access to the Golden One Arena, we'll also have other alternates.
Wonderful. Thank you for introducing yourself. I believe there may be some Commissioners with questions. I saw Commissioner Lebig nod, so we'll start with Commissioner Lebig.
Thank you, Mr. Gunit. I have just one general question about the development and your project overall. I noticed that you actually build for various hotel companies. How confident are you that this is going to be a ho, I'm sorry, a home-to-suites?
A home-to-suites will be a home run. You know, so we have done, we've been, I've been doing this for 25 years. Presidio has been in existence for 18 years. Our portfolio includes anything from a 16-room Sterling Hotel in downtown Sacramento to a 430-room hotel in Texas, the Sheraton. We, you know, we have done luxury, we have done mid-scale. We think the home-to-suites is the most exciting hotel project, hotel brand in the country right now. It's one of the fastest-growing. The demographics are perfect for a home, too. We need an extended-stay. It's mid-scale. It's close to all the eggs, you know, the ingress, ingress from highways is excellent. This area is obviously going through a transformation, and we feel, you know, we'll be a big building block for that. We have a third-party management company which does our underwriting for Interstate, which is the largest hotel management company in America. And according to their underwriting, this hotel, you know, should stabilize in high 70s occupancy and a mid, you know, mid 150s, 160s rate, which should generate more than 500,000 in TOT alone for the city of West Sacramento.
I think the question was a little bit more of contracting with the actual hotel. It's listed as a Hilton Home-to-Suites. Is that, how confident are you?
We already have an LOI from Hilton. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I read, I understood the question wrong.
No, that's, I got a lot more information out of it, but that was, that was the question.
No, we already have, this will be our third Hilton product. We have a DoubleTree in Rancho Gudau, which we converted, and then obviously, we're doing Hilton Garden Inn in Davis, and this will be the third Hilton product in our portfolio.
Very good. Commissioner Harrison, I see questions.
Yes, I just really have a curiosity that I wanted to ask you about. First off, you know, I want to thank you for choosing West Sacramento. I'm really happy about this project. So my curiosity is, I've got family in Surprise, Arizona, and there's a number of hotels, extended-stay hotels similar to this there. And Surprise is really far removed from like Scottsdale and Phoenix, and there's really nothing going on there, but I found out a little while later that those extended-stay hotels were built primarily to meet the need of professional baseball players who go there during their offseason to train. And so when I saw this, I was thinking, like, is something like that in demand here? And, you know, is there any kind of prevailing need that you have found in your research that is going to really be a feeder for this extended-stay hotel, or is it kind of more general with regard to a lot of the stuff that's already been going on?
That's a great question. You know, extended-stay hotels versus transient hotels, the difference is that they are designed in much more thoughtful way with kitchenettes. And, you know, for a guest who's going to be there for one to two days, so it addresses comp, guest, I mean, executives, employees who come for, to corporations, ballplayers who may want to come and stay here. So it provides a comfort of, you know, home, and because you're going to be staying for longer term, it's designed in a much more modern, much more guest-friendly way. There's no extended-stay hotel in the vicinity. The closest extended-stay hotel is the Residence Inn in downtown Sacramento of this level, of, you know, a higher brand. I mean, there's Extended Stay of Americas, but they are a little, a little lower ADR. We feel that in extended-stay hotels in West Sacramento, not only, you know, obviously will cater to the demands of the businesses in West Sacramento include, but also reach across the Tower Bridge and fulfill, and it actually pulls some business away, which now goes to Sacramento, especially the Embassy Suites, which is also a Hilton product, so there's also synergy there between this brand and that. But, you know, to answer your question, extended-stay hotels generally outperform typical hotels by 5% to 6% in occupancy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Vu, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have Ms. Austin?
I mostly just have a statement or a request. So first of all, thank you very much for choosing to cite it in our city. And then my request is just that whether you're just a developer or an operator, I would request that the person or entity that is responsible for operating, make sure that they become really a part of our business community, join our chamber, et cetera. So that would be my only request, and we're excited to...
Yeah, no, that's a great thing. Listen, I'd live in Davis, so I'm part of, you know, the, all the Yolo County's boards, and we absolutely want to, you know, most of our hotels are in this area. We're, you know, going to have six, seven hotels just in this area, so absolutely part of the community, and, you know, we understand Yolo County, Sacramento, Davis, that area.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Great. With that, I think we can let you have a seat, sir. Thank you for coming up, and I don't have any more, any public comment requests still, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I think we can take us back to the group for a short discussion. Any questions, comments? Nope, looks clear down that way. Everyone's good here.
Just a comment. I appreciate Sarah, nice job on the presentation. Thank you for the information, and also to the applicant for choosing or selecting West Sacramento. I think this type of hotel would definitely help continue to improve that corridor, West Capitol. That's much needed, and I know we have done in the past few years many improvements to this corridor, including this building, so looking forward to see what this type of development will bring to West Sacramento, and also maybe encourage others to consider West Sacramento as a destination or a project like this. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll just take a moment and echo those comments. I had a secret life in hotels where I spent seven years working for a company that most of their portfolio was an extended-stay brand, and so I understand what you're doing, and I think it's a really great location and a great opportunity for both this energy with the other Hilton, changing even our own West SAC hotel scene. I think this will have a dramatic impact on that level of competition in the local area, and also continuing to foster additional development along this corridor, which I think is super important right now, especially given some other opportunities within a block of here that are presenting themselves. So I wanted to thank you very much for, again, considering West SAC for the project, and I think it's an awesome product, and I'm excited to see it. With that, I think we are ready to make a motion.
So I moved, I moved to adopt staff recommendations.
I just want to make sure that the addressing of bike racks, is that something that we would like to entertain as a condition of approval, or that's up for a discussion?
I do, I do have a motion that has been made at this time.
I can withdraw that.
Thank you, being procedurally accurate. Ms. Austin, I would lead the two.
Let me ask Steph, is that, is that sort of thing something that would appear in a condition of approval?
It certainly could. You can provide us, you know, direction to include, you know, bicycle parking, like on a where feasible basis, or if we want to draft a condition along those lines, we could, we certainly could do that. I don't think it needs to be especially complex.
I don't think we need, I don't think we need a condition, condition for that. I think just to encourage the developer to consider that West Sacramento's vision of other modes of transportation is important, that something like that would be very essential for that type of development. So I think, I think I'm good with that.
I concur with the Vice Chair. Any other comments on this item?
With that, I'm comfortable with staff recommendation. Commissioner Harrison?
All right, Commissioner Harrison, would you like to re-fire?
Wait, did she move? Because I can second. No, wait. Okay, I read. I moved to adopt staff recommendations.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harrison. Have a second?
And I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Austin seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Tilly?
Yes, any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and that appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Very good. Congratulations, sir. Very nicely done again, Sarah. All right. With that, we move to Item Four. I believe we have another public hearing regarding proposed conditional use permit for retail auto sales at 1540 South River Road. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair Sternfels and members of the Commission. This item is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for retail auto sales at 1540 South River Road. The project's located in the Pioneer Bluff area in the waterfront zone. In terms of the project, the vast majority of the applicant's vehicles will be stored inside the building. There will be a couple spaces outside that are required by DMV, but per the conditions of approval, we have limited outstore, outside storage and display of vehicles to the bare minimum that the DMV allows. This particular use is a conditional use in the waterfront zone. Staff during their analysis of this project did discuss the project with the City Attorney's Office in regards to Pioneer Bluff and the transition of the area. And after those conversations with the City Attorney's Office, it was decided to make this project a limited-term use permit. Staff is recommending a 10-year timeframe. And also stemming out of the conversations with the City Attorneys, there are recommendations in the conditions of approval that should, at the end of the 10-year timeframe, if this particular use changes from conditional to basically not allowed in the zone, that this project would be hard-capped at 10 years, and there would be no option for a time extension. Also, at the end of the 10 years, if that was not the case, the project would come back to the Planning Commission, and staff would request that the Commission look at the findings to make sure that all the findings could be made. Should that not be the case, that would also terminate the use permit at the 10-year mark. Staff is recommending approval of this project on a temporary basis, as we feel all the findings can be made. As Mr. Tilly mentioned at the beginning, there was an error in the agenda for this in regard, in regards to the conditions of approval for this project. The ones actually located in the staff report, however, are indeed correct. We're asking that you approve the Class One categorical exemption and the use permit. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here in the audience. He does not have a presentation for you, but is happy to answer any questions specifically about his business that you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. I know I have questions for you. I'm assuming maybe other Commissioners do as well, so before we open the public hearing, maybe we'll try to tackle some of those. Commissioner Austin, would you like to start?
Yeah, I just need a little bit more clarification. Is this conditional use permit, are we talking about a term of approval of 10 years with the option to renew, and it would come before Planning Commission, or for five years, and then it would renew after five years? I just, I'm not totally clear from the staff department for your presentation.
The term of the use permit is for 10 years, and it would then need to come back with you should it be eligible for a time extension.
Could you clarify, in the staff report, there's a reference to a five-year period?
Please.
Can you clear, is that, is that the lease?
That is the lease.
And so that's, that's outside of the city's purview, then?
That is the lease for the building. The applicant has an initial five-year lease with the option with the landowner to extend for another five years.
Okay, thank you. That helps clarify things.
Just a quick couple of questions. Do we know how many automobiles will be on sale? I mean, how many can that facility hold?
I'm not sure the exact number. The applicant may know the answer to that.
Okay, I can wait until when the applicant comes up. Okay, I can wait until when the applicant comes up. And then also, and the reason I ask that is because there have been a project in the past that have, that has come before us in that same area, and one of the concerns was traffic, particularly, I guess, it's a little bit different because those were trucks. But I'm curious actually to hear from the applicant, what kind of marketing will occur. I know it's by appointment only, but it will definitely drive, will it not drive additional traffic to that area? And is that something that we're concerned about, given the proximity to the railroad tracks that are there as well? And so I'm just kind of curious to hear how many cars will be part of this business, but also the type of marketing that will be used to be able to promote the business by appointment only. So I'm just curious kind of what that plan is. Thank you.
Very good. On the other end? Nope. Commissioner Harrison, questions for city staff at this time?
No, I don't have any questions for city staff.
So I did, I did want to dive a little bit deeper into the difference between the, the lease agreement and then the staff recommendation for the 10-year agreement. And I want to do that before we have the applicant come up, actually. So I guess my question for city staff is when you were considering a 10-year agreement versus doing a five-year and having them come back in five years, can you help me understand the thinking that got us the 10 years? And I specifically ask this in context with another conditional use permit project we have that I know is in the Bridge District, but is literally only 200 yards from here, where the first year we did one year, and then I think my urging, we moved to two years because it's going to be a while before that area gets developed. And so I just, from both a consistency standpoint and then just understanding and thinking, if you could provide a little more context.
Just clarification. This is, this is conditionally permitted use in the waterfront. The other project is legal non-conforming use, I believe. So slight different twist on the extension.
No, and I am not speaking about the tanker truck project. I'm talking about the one on the other side of 50.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, Commissioner Lebig is correct. I think the one you're referring to was the, I think he's a Stucco contractor, or some type of contractor in the Bridge District. He went in as a substitution of a non-conforming use. And so we did put a limited, a much more limited term on that one. Here, this, this use is a conditionally permitted in the waterfront zone. So we're not talking about any type of non-conforming situation with, with this particular project. We're definitely evolving in how we're treating non-conforming uses and continued uses. It's something we're working on hard right now with the city attorney's office for part of the zoning ordinance modernization work. So I think, as we recall, the last time we were up here talking about that, it was, it was clear that nobody was happy with where we were at just yet. So we're continuing to work on that. But I know both of them were done under use permits, but I really believe that we're not quite talking apples and apples when it comes to a, one was a non-conforming use, and then one, this one, if it were to receive a use permit, would be a conforming use. So it's, it is a little different animal.
Could you still speak to, then, the thought process behind the 10-year versus the five and having them come back in five?
Well, coming off the Pioneer Bluff transition plan work, which Economic Development staff presented here a few meetings back, you know, through the economic analysis on that, it did appear that for Pioneer Bluff, it's, it may, it may take a while longer than we, perhaps we previously thought for some of the transition to really occur out there and for that whole area to be absorbed. So it seemed to, given that this was already at least a conditionally permitted use in the zoning district, and that they're able to utilize the property, you know, more or less, you know, as is, the, the longer term, you know, seemed to be appropriate. Technically, the commission doesn't have, actually not technically, totally, the planning commission doesn't have to put any time limit on this one if you, if you so choose to do so. But we're recommending this to go align with it. They can make use of the property in the meantime. And we really learned a lot through that Pioneer Bluff transition plan work. And that's really what gave us the basis to sort of align this term with what we anticipate their lease terms to be.
Thank you. Any other questions for city staff at this time? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. The applicant is welcome to come up and introduce themselves. And then I know we had at least one question from Commissioner Castillo that you may want to address in your, in an opening remark, if you'd like. And then we can do additional questions from commissioners. I don't have any requests to speak on this item.
And also in your presentation, would you mind speaking to, describing a little bit more for the public what type of auto sales you're interested in?
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is the first time I've ever had to do anything like this, so bear with me, please.
Could you just start with your name, sir?
Yeah, my name is, my name is Bill Griffith, and we have a company, Agent Auto, who's been in business for 20-some years. And we would not be requesting this or even looking for it had cannabis not run us out of our existing facility where we are. And that's our whole reason for moving. Fortunately, the Ramos family has come to our rescue and said that they really enjoy our plan, the way we do business. We're very different than most auto sales dealers. We don't have rah-rah's. We don't have big signs out all over the street. We don't allow people to park, and, and we don't have big events. Our business is basically set up as we advertise on a website, we do appointment only, we actually, DMV sends us people to train to be good sales dealers. They are behind us with what we do. We have offices for not only us, but, you know, two or three dealers that we will train and, and to do the right thing, to sell right, to be professional, to gain respect from the people. And 95% of the people that buy cars from us come back to us to buy more. And that's because of the way we do business. As far as the traffic goes, probably not, hardly any time is there more than maybe five or six customers there at any one time. We have inside-the-gate parking. There is no parking allowed out on the road whatsoever. So the people will call us, make an appointment, they will come into our showroom, we will have displays area outside that are covered, that are behind the fence. So driving by on the street, you can't even see our cars. The only thing you'll see is you'll see a sign. The name of the sign up on the building will be West Sacramento Auto Plaza. Okay. With this, it allows us to, to conduct business. We can, we can take test drives, and go, we'll go down and turn around at the turnaround circle going south on, on the river, South River Road, and then come back, and then we will conduct our business in either our office or our waiting area. We have desks and we have tables in there. But again, very seldom do I ever see more than five. The total amount of people that will park there on a daily basis will be approximately 10, maybe 12 people. And we have enough outside room for 60 to 80 cars that are outside, but they're under a partially covered area behind the fence, off of the road. So it, it doesn't really dictate any type of, of a traffic issue or traffic problem. We will have cars that will be pulled out into the display area for sale, that will be stored inside the building. We have classic muscle cars, four-wheel drives. We, we cater to low income. We do a lot for the job corps. The job corps will call us up and say, we have a young man that just got out of jail. He needs a car. We've trained him for work. Can you help us? And what we do is we, with no interest, finance the cars for him. They put $1,000, excuse me, they put $1,000 down for the gentleman, and he comes over, they make payments to us. They are so happy to get a car and get a job that they pay us like clockwork. We never have an issue, never have a repo problem. We have cambered security throughout the whole building. There will be 16 security cameras. We have notifications of no cash on facilities. We keep no money there. It's taken to the bank daily of anything that we, that we, we get. And as far as total cars on the property, it would, might max out at maybe 100. But there's room for 150 or 60 cars there, plus parking. Again, the Ramos family has just helped us out tremendously in this. They, they understand how difficult it is to get a location because of all the difference. And you guys are aware, there's some really shoddy dealers out there. We don't operate that way. We operate like a training institution that's very professional, and everybody respects us. So I hope you'll see, or okay it. And the reason for the five-year, 10-year, that was us. We could have just said a 10-year lease, but I'm 71. My son's sitting right there. I'm going to turn the business over to him within a year or two. And, and he may decide to keep it going, and he may not. So in order to keep the property occupied and tax money and everything coming into the city, that's why they went to 10 years, because then it would, it would stay full right up to the point of when you might need it for the other. And hopefully by then, my son will be able to buy his own place.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional questions from commissioners? Commissioner Lebig?
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Going through the, the conditions, there are a couple that are unique to this project. I just wanted to make sure that you were actually comfortable with all of the conditions as written.
As I know them, yes. The only one that I would love to be able to do is I'd love to have a repair facility that we could, you know, repair our customers' cars if necessary. In other words, they drive out and they say, I hear it ticking or whatever. And under this, we really can't do that. But that's not an issue, okay? It is not an issue. I want you to understand that. We can, most all of our cars, we sell with a warranty, and the cars can be looked at at any ASC certified dealer. Any transmissions, engine work, anything of that nature, they all go out to some other source that's ASC certified.
Okay. Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned earlier that you guys train salesmen for the DMV. You help train people. How does that work?
We say, we train dealers.
Dealers.
DMV, they, they apply for their dealer's license, okay? In order to do that, they have to have a location.
Okay.
So we offer them a low-priced location, i.e. an office and the required space for two cars. DMV sends them to us and says, Bill, we have some people that would like to go into the business. They pass their tests, they qualified, they need a location. We give them a location. It's a 12-month contract, okay? And, and they pay us for our input, our, I guess we're consultants to a degree. And DMV likes what we do, so they help support us.
Okay. My second question has to do with something I read in here. It said you were a firefighter for a number of years?
Yes, I was Sacramento fireman.
All right, thanks for your service.
Well, thank you.
And my last question has to do with the repair facility that you mentioned earlier. What, what would need to be done in order for you guys to have that ability?
I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know what your requirements are. We were willing to accept it without it. It would be nice if we had something like that. It would be nice if we had like a smog facility right there close. That's, that for the dealer, or, or just a light repair where you could, we don't want to do oil changes or anything like that. That's not, we're not interested in doing that. But if you got a flat tire, you need to change some tires, something of that nature. I don't want to do any tire work. I would rather take it to a tire shop.
Maybe this is something for the chair to address, or maybe for staff to address. You know, right now, sitting in my position, I don't see a reason why we can't try to make that amendment, but maybe there's something I don't know.
Mr. Toley would have answered that. I don't.
Yeah, major auto repair, which would be like engine and body work, is, is not permitted in the waterfront zone. And I'm going off of, of memory. I don't have the municipal code in front of me. I don't, I don't believe that even minor repair is a permitted use in the waterfront zone either. So we have tried to limit repair to, you know, cleaning and, you know, incidental things that may be necessary to get a, you know, vehicle ready for prime time. But earlier on in this project, in speaking with Mr. Griffith along the way, you know, he had previously also had indicated that some of these other things, other repairs would, would likely need to be farmed out to another, another facility to hopefully some of our other West Sacramento businesses.
Go ahead. So...
Well, I mean, this is an area that I, I don't really know very much about as far as making the changes to give you what you need, or whether there's, we can put a limitation, I don't know. But, you know, frankly, I, I very much like you guys and what you do. So, and I am very, I emphasize with your situation about having to move facilities. So I'm a minimal to helping you out if there's a way to do that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So it would, a couple of things. One, I do believe Mr. Tilly's correct in that auto repair of any type is, would, is not a permitted use in this area, which would put us in the non-conforming use conversation, not the conditional use permit conversation. And I don't think we'd be able to make that decision this evening. So we would need to hold this item over, open. But I would want some discussion on that after we finished with the public hearing amongst the group before we made that call.
Okay.
On that, on that subject you just mentioned, as far as the auto repair, that's for profit or making money. We don't need that. We don't want that, as far as I'm concerned. The biggest thing we need right now is time. And we need this approved as quickly as we can if we're going to get it, or we need to pack up and move somewhere else.
So if I'm hearing from you, sir, correctly, you prefer us to move forward the item as it is this evening?
Right. I, that would be the most beneficial thing to everybody right now.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vu, any additional questions?
Yeah, I actually did have, did have a question, but I think you answered it during your presentation. I was going to ask you how comfortable you felt about, you know, this five-year, 10-year lease, and then also the 10-year use permit. But it seems like, you know, you have that contingency plan in place, and that was something that you had?
We're very comfortable with, with the way that it's set up, because it, it, it helps us possibly for 10 years, and it also helps the Ramos family.
Okay.
Because we could stay there for 10 years. And if nothing happens in 10 years, my son is only 36 years old. He'll be 46. You know, he'll probably still want to do the same business. Hopefully, he will have made enough to buy his own place. But if he hasn't, it would be very comfortable and very nice if they could stay there longer if nothing was taking place.
All right. I know for a strong business environment, stability is key. But if you're, no, this was what you had wanted, and you're comfortable with it, then I think that's okay with me.
Yeah, we are very much so. Thank you.
And then just to confirm with city staff, if the applicant did decide after five years not to renew any new use of that site, even though there was a 10-year permit by a new applicant, would, would still need consideration at some level?
Yeah, I mean, you're granting this for 10, for 10 years, and use permits, you know, do run, you know, with the land.
They run with the land, not the, not the applicant.
Yeah. So should this applicant leave, a new, a new lease could be established with a new project under these same conditions?
Right.
Yes. Yeah, or they, or they would have to come back here to modify it in front of you.
Thank you for that quasi-confirmation, correction. Commissioner Austin?
Not, not so much questions, but a comment. Thank you for, for continuing to be a, for desiring to continue to be a business owner in our community. And just a statement more about what, what I think, what I'm, I'm kind of contemplating here today. So my sense is that, yes, this is, this is not, I, I don't think this advances the vision of the waterfront. However, I do recognize that we do have some time. And, and bearing in mind some of the other existing uses, this is not one of those non-conforming sort of uses. This is a little bit more consistent. So although I don't really think that it is consistent, this use would be consistent with the waterfront, I think that this is a good interim use for this period of time. And I'm actually, I came in more comfortable with proposing a five-year term, but I'm fairly comfortable with a 10-year term now hearing a little bit more perspective. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Castillo?
Appreciate, Mr. Griffith, the model of business that you have in place. I think having a workforce development slash training into, to where you train individuals to go into that type of work is awesome. I hadn't seen that before. And if we can train some young kids in, in West SAC who are interested in that, that'd be even better. But appreciate, appreciate the, the, the kind of model that you're looking for. And, and this question, I know, I know we've, staff kind of addressed it, and going to Commissioner Harrison's point, and I recognize that you're not interested in, in, in maintenance, which, which is important. But just a question, is a smog check facility considered a maintenance facility? And the reason I ask is because it's, it would be an interesting concept and just something to think about, and maybe something that can come back before us. something to think about, and maybe something that can come back before us at some other point, at some other time, if possible, for amending, if that's something that you're interested in. But if, if you're training young people or adults who are interested in going into this type of industry, whether it's car sale or envision something like training how to do smog checks, in case that's what they want to go into in the future, that still kind of helps develop individuals who want to go into that type of workforce. And so I'm just curious with staff in terms of the distinction between, I understand the maintenance component where you kind of just go in there and just fix automobiles, but is a smog check facility, for example, considered maintenance or mechanical?
We consider that, under our definition, that's minor auto repair.
Got it, okay.
And, excuse me, one, to add to that, the STAR, which is, which is test-only facility, they do no maintenance whatsoever. The only thing they can do is test, and that's what would be there. It would not be one that they can come in and say, "Well, we need to change this or change that," and then be able to do that. They could not do that. Okay? So it would just be a test-only facility, if it was any at all.
And is that something that, that they can come back, that can come back before the commission for consideration if we approve this? If we were to approve this today for a 10-year conditionally used permit, and the business owner was interested in exploring that further, is that something that can be brought before the commission at a later date for us to be able to consider? If, or is it not even something that can be considered, given the definition of low maintenance or whatever that may be, for a smog check facility, not a, not a, not the other?
Probably the best avenue to broach that topic is through the zoning ordinance modernization project. We would have to consider that a little more globally.
Okay. Thank you. Which is something to consider for the future. I know, I know you're comfortable with, with how things are now, and again, just appreciate the workforce development and training component that you have for the, for the business, and thanks for staying in West Sacramento.
Well, thank you. Also, just for your own information, besides the people who are, are, are being taught new items, we have retired schoolteachers, retired firemen, retired policemen that want to make a little extra income on their retirements, and they come to us also to be trained, and they're very good people. Very good people.
Thank you.
So I have more of a comment than a question, but it is actually kind of towards the applicant, so I'm gonna, I apologize for making you stand up there a bit longer. Out of, this commission certainly has some sensitivities to that, the district in which you're moving into, and certainly for good reason, with the long-term goals of the city to redevelop that area. I particularly have a sensitivity to any project that's going to bring additional traffic to that area. I run home on that road frequently, and I bike on that road frequently, and I...
I might have seen you go by.
Yeah. And I've almost been hit more times than anywhere else that I bike or run in the city, because folks are just not used to still having pedestrians run on and bike on that road. My, my only kind of comment of, or ask really, is that if you're, if you're going to go south for your test drives, please just make sure that folks in those fancy cars that want to go fast and they want to see how fast they go immediately after pulling out the parking lot, because that's what I do when I get in a fast car, make, make sure that they're aware of their surroundings, because it is, there's some turns there right when you go down the street, and if that's, I'd really prefer you go a different direction than towards the neighborhoods and where all, everyone's commuting to. But if you have to go that direction, please, if you can just include in your spiel something about being careful, because there is increased bicycle and pedestrian use on that road. And as we continue to get there...
There is, and at times that road's very dangerous. I've noticed that myself, even pulling out of there from time to time. I have great apathy for, for, I'm a, I'm a bicycle rider, too. And there's many times that people, they just, either they don't see or they don't care, one of, one of the two. But I go on every test drive, either my son or myself, that there are accompanied test drives. If they take off fast or they drive the car hard, I ask them to please pull over and I take over driving the car for the rest of the test drive. And we teach that to everybody that comes through our facility. You just can't trust, unfortunately, people too much with anything you own.
Very true. And I think in this area, because it's in transition, it makes it a little more vulnerable to unfortunate situations, because it's not really developed the way it should, and yet we're treating it a certain way. And so if you can just take that back with you, I would, that would mean a lot to me personally, and probably a lot of other folks who use that, use that space. With that, I don't have any other questions or comments that I'm seeing. We have no requests to speak from the public, so, sir, you are welcome to have a seat.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
We'll bring it back to the commission. Any additional comments, considerations, things folks would like to bring back? Commissioner Lebig?
Just some, just some general comments, because I could see why there would be some concern over this project. There was certainly some when I opened the packet, looking at it for the first time. But I think all the points were made. Development of, of this area is going to take some time. The phasing is always difficult to balance, and we're not sure how fast it's going to go. So I appreciate the applicant actually considering something like a 10-year conditionally used permit, which is actually unusual, I think, for, for, for our town. This is a, currently a conditionally permitted use for the waterfront. And so, like I said, this is a permitted use, conditionally. But I, I think what we're tripping up over is the fear that it could be an auto mall, you know? Yours is not an auto mall. The reason that we wouldn't want a, a large lot like that is it would actually kill the waterfront, and that's clearly not our goal. So I, I believe our intent for having this in the zoning is something like a Tesla dealership, you know, a small boutiquey, the indoor facilities. We currently had, recently had one, the Auto Vault, which actually was a great business here in town, did something also very similar. And once I envisioned that, I thought, okay, I, I could see this, this working. So thank you for your application, and look forward to seeing the cars.
Yes, so what really sold me on this was the fact that you got, that you guys have been in business for quite some time, and, you know, initially when I read that there were going to be no cars on the roadway, all the cars were going to be inside, it was going to be appointment-only, I, I didn't believe it at first, but hearing that the applicant has been in business for some time and the business model works, and also hearing some more details about the applicant, I'm very comfortable with this project. I know that there is going to be quite some time before the riverfront gets developed into what we intended to become. And I'm willing to allow this, because for the period of time, that area can be put to use, but understand in 10 years, probably going to have to move. That's all.
Commissioner Vu?
Just to echo the comments made by the previous commissioners, no, thank you for your commitment to stay in West Sacramento.
Commissioner Austin, no comments? Vice Chair? Very well. I, I'll just, I appreciate you guys taking the time to come and speak with us tonight and be open about your business and, and share all your answers to our questions. Certainly support the, the development, and, and probably more importantly, the temporary use. I think it, it's very easy for us as a community to get caught in the future plans and forget about that there's something that happens in between the present and the future when those things actually come to fruition. And so being able to come up with a appropriate solution for both the property owner and for a business in need is a great thing. And I think that's what this project has done, is marry together those two things in an area that's really important to the city in the long run and also important in the short run, to be used in an appropriate way. And every business we have that's activated in that area, for me right now, is actually much better than the alternative, which is having everything with fences around it. So I, I appreciate both the applicant and, of course, the property owner for, for pulling this together. With that, I think we are good to move forward with the motion. I will just clarify, if you can specify, your motion is as outlined in the staff report, so there is no lack of clarity on the action we're taking. That would be appreciated.
I will move the recommended action as specified in the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Lebig with the motion.
Second.
And a second by Vice Chair Castillo, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Mr. Tilly?
Yes, any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
We have a unanimous decision. Congratulations to the applicant. So we have finished our regular agenda. We'll go to General Administration Function, Part Two, informal discussion. Mr. Tilly, anything else for us tonight?
No, sir.
I, I have one item next Friday. The, there's another installment of the, I believe it's a monthly speaker series by the American Planning Association, and my colleagues with the Urban Land Institute are presenting a discussion around essentially the housing market. So I think it's a, I think it's a really beneficial thing. So I, if you're interested, you can learn more at the Sacramento Valley APA website.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. Anyone else? Very good. We'll be adjourned.